All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our work session. We're gonna start off by conducting roll call Commissioner Damond Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner. Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner. You're on mute. Okay. She is present, Madam Clerk, I think she's just having some audio issues. Commissioner Sana Gregory. You're on mute also. Is it us?
Can you all hear me out? I'm present.
Yeah, it was on our end, we apologize.
I'm here as well, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Present.
All right, Madam Clerk, everybody is present for this evening's work session. Before we go into our agenda, I would like to share some information with the public in reference to, everybody know that yesterday was our first day of early voting or advanced voting, and the Board of Elections, our Elections Director thought it'd be prudent to share some information with you. So if you would, just bear with me a little bit, but the Clayton County Board of Elections and Registration currently has 201,000 registered voters. Currently, we are conducting the November general election. We started mailing absentee ballots for the November general election on September 15th, 2020. Voters may request an absentee ballot through the newly implemented absentee online portal. That portal can be accessed at ballotrequest, one word, ballotrequest.sos.ga.gov/. Has an option to request a ballot by mail. Additionally, voters may track their ballot from the newly implemented tracking system. That can be done at georgia.balottrack, that's T-R-A-X, ballottrack.net/voter/. As of October 12th, 2020, the Clayton County Board of Elections office staff has processed 40,274 absentee ballot requests for the November, for the November general election. The last like election in 2016, we processed 4,200 absentee ballot requests. Voters may request absentee ballots 180 days or six months prior to the election. Voters have the option to have contactless service without paying postage to drop off their ballots at one of our seven current Dropbox locations. The following are the official absentee Dropbox locations in Clayton County. At Elections and Registration, which is at, at the old courthouse. South Clayton Recreation Center. Virginia Burton Gray Recreation Center. Carl Rottenizer Recreation Center. Forest Park Branch Library. Frank Bailey Senior Center. J. Charlie Griswells Senior Center. And Lake Spivey Recreation Center, which is pending its opening. We stated, we started early voting for the November general election on October 12th, 2020. As of October 12th, 2020, 3,515 voters have cast ballots at one of our six advanced voting sites. The last like election in 2016, the first day of voting yielded 2,557 voters. We planned to open an additional early voting location at Lake Spivey on Saturday, October 24th, and it'll be open through the October 30th. And again, that is pending the opening of that site. The following are the official absentee Dropbox locations in Clayton County. Again, this is for Dropbox, absentee Dropbox. Elections and Registration, again, the old courthouse. South Clayton Recreation Center. Virginia Burton Gray Recreation Center. Carl Rottenizer Recreation Center. William Lee Headquarters Library, which is off Battle Creek Road. Marl Municipal Complex, and again, the Lake Spivey Recreation Center pending its opening. We encourage voters to make a voter plan, to vote early and expect longer lines due to higher turnout. Sample ballots can be viewed at www.claytonelections, one word, claytonelections.com. And we also encourage voters to check their status from the Georgia My Voter page at www.mvp.sos.ga.gov/mvp/mvp.do. You may review sample ballots, check your voter and ballot status, and receive your district information. Clayton County is growing in voter age population by 4% each year. For the first time in the history of Clayton Elections, Clayton County Elections, we have hit the 200,000 mark for voters. As a result of growth, we began adding new precincts. We added seven additional sites effective for the November general election to bring our total number of elections, of precincts, to 65. This is to help reduce the lines on Election Day. The new sites are as follows. Precinct EW2 is at East Clayton Elementary School, located at 3675 Steel Road in Ellenwood. Precinct JB19, located at Mondays Mill High School. 9652 Fayetteville Road, located in Jonesboro. Precinct LJ6, Eddie White Academy, 118. Say again, Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought you had a comment. Okay. Eddie White Academy located at 11808 Panhandle Road in Hampton. Precinct LJ7, Lovejoy Community Center, located at 11622 Hastings Bridge Road in Lovejoy. Precinct MO10, New Faith Apostolic, Apostolic, I'm sorry, Ministries at 3406 Rex Road in Rex. Precinct MO11, Antioch East Baptist Church, 2352 Old Rex Mar Road in Ellenwood. Precinct OAK, Oak 5, is at Martin Luther King Elementary School, located at 5745 West Leeds Mill Road, College Park. Impacted voters were mailed notices via first-class mail. They received handbills during the September special election if they participated, and will receive an updated precinct card. We encourage voters to check their polling site prior to Election Day to know where to vote on Election Day. Also, on Election Day, voters must vote at their assigned precincts. Masks are strongly recommended, as well as social distancing. Please check the www.claytonelections.com website, and you can also go to our website, the county's website, which is www.claytoncountyga.gov for more election updates. All this information will be made available to the public once again on our websites, as well as TV23 and our social media outlets, so please have a plan. Have some patience when you go to the voting post. It's not actually a bad thing that people are standing in line to vote, exercising the right to vote, and we definitely encourage that. We know that there's been some problems or some issues, but we're working on that, and we're gonna make sure that your time is well spent and you are able to move through the line as expeditiously as possible. But again, remember, Clayton County's growing, our numbers are growing, more people are actually going to the polls and have registered to vote. So I encourage you, please stay in that line, cash your vote, 'cause your vote does count. Thank you. Madam Clerk, the next item is, if there's any discussion, each Commissioner should have received the preliminary items for our October 20th board meeting. Is there any discussion items off of that agenda that any board member would like to take up? All right, then we'll go to our first work session discussion, which is an update on small box discount store moratorium. Mr. Reed.
Good afternoon, I'm Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. As you may have seen on the agenda, there is a extension of the moratorium on small box discount stores, which will, if passed, take effect and go through early December, December 9th, if I believe correctly. And I know that we had extended this over a period of months since early this year when the Board made the decision to initially pass a moratorium, and there's really been a little silence on, on the staff's part as to what has been done in that interim, so I just wanted to kind of give a quick update of where we are. As you may recall, back in January, there were a number of municipalities, including DeKalb County, Stonecrest, that had passed, passed ordinances affecting small box discount stores, and we wanted to look at what DeKalb was doing and not necessarily have to reinvent the wheel depending on how they were approaching that issue. After several months of, well, COVID hitting, and then several months of their expert doing their analysis, it appears that they're taking a different tack than how we would have approached it. I think they're taking more of a view of how discounts, small box discount stores affect crime rates in, in DeKalb. That's a very particularized study that based on that particular jurisdiction's crime rates, and so it would not be easily transferable to Clayton County without us having to, I guess, similarly commission and pay for similar studies. So what staff and I, legal and community development, we have taken a look at the, mapped out where our small box discount stores are, and it looks like we have, according to the definition of that, about 25 of them spread out throughout the county. Six clusters of those 25 have more than one within a half-mile radius of the, of one another. Some have, where there are three, right next to each other. So what we're contemplating is having, let me back up. One of, there's been several studies that have been throughout the country that talks about small box discount stores having an effect on creating or exacerbating food deserts, and food deserts being where the type of nutrition that's available to the population in the general area does not consist of fresh fruit, fresh vegetables, and mostly consists of prepackaged and high, just not really very good quality food. And what, some of the studies have shown that when these stores come into areas where there are your more established grocery stores like, you know, Kroger or the equivalent, the costs that they have, some, they drive those bigger, better quality grocery stores out of business, and so it also creates a, creates a desert and keeps a desert there because no, no grocery store will move into that area because they know that, they've seen how that onus also failed. So what we're looking at is having a, looking at where we are, looking at these locations consistent with where our grocery stores are, and having some sort of distance requirement or other types of things we can have to make it either special land use or some kind of permit. As this Board is aware, this, these type of stores also attract quality of life issues, so we may have as part of the application process, things like making sure they have video and trash management plans as part of their application process, so that we can make sure those things are thought of on the front end, as opposed to after they're up and running and we're having to constantly chase them through citations and threatening to revoke licenses. But, so that's kind of, I actually probably talked a little longer than what I anticipated, but this is kind of a very high level of where we are with this process. We anticipate that we'll be back in front of the Board at the latter part of the year with some proposals as to how we wanted to tackle this from a zoning perspective and to bring it to you all for, for a vote. And I'm available for any questions if you have any.
All right, anybody have any questions? Was there any discussed saturation point or saturation level to these per square mile for our county?
Well, right now, we're, we're looking at, I'll try to show you, maybe you can see the.
Well, better yet, if, if you have that on email, 'cause I know I would love to see it.
Sure, what I'll do is we'll send out, we'll send out this map that shows where they are and the locations and where, and this half-mile radius of where they are, send that out to you, so the Board can see what we're looking at as well.
Great.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Reed, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to say thank you so much for the job that you and the staff have done. I think this is something that is extremely important for us, as those that are a part of this Board. Our constituents ask us all the time about what are we doing to affect the number of dollar stores coming into the area? And, you know, I'm gonna say that this work is definitely needed. I'm looking forward to getting to the finish line, because I know, it was my understanding back in 2017 that this was part of the zoning rewrite, but nevertheless, we are where we are, and I'm just hoping that we can get to a, a final end so that we can have something, as you just stated and so eloquently outlined, to be able to begin to affect the number of stores in our area and, and change the economic outlook of our community. So again, thank you to you and your staff, great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Capital Outlay Division, the presentation by COO Dietrich Stanford.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Before he come up, I wanted to also say, I know yesterday, I appreciate the report Ms. Dozier gave on the elections, and I know she and all the other Elections Directors are pretty much in a hot seat, you know, sometimes at the mercy of the state with what's going on and so forth. The elections, some of the Elections Board members were so helpful yesterday, they came to the Rottenizer Center, and you know, just tried to soothe some of the people who were waiting and so forth, and I appreciate that from the Elections Board members. And again, you know, Ms. Dozier, I know she's put in some work, and I know she has some restraints with the COVID and so forth, but, and of course, she's got three weeks of being, well, four more weeks of being in the hot seat, so I know that's not an easy job, but I appreciate it. So, and thank you for the report, Ms. Dozier.
Mr. Stanford, please.
So, good evening, Board. I come before you co-presenting with Building and Maintenance Director, Mr. Benjamin Hopkins. Before Mr. Hopkins come forward, I wanted to set the stage as it pertains to the requests or the recommendation as it pertains to the Planning, Design, and Construction Division under Building and Maintenance that we'll be bringing forward to the BLC. As the Board is aware of, over the last three SPOS programs, the 04, the 09, and the 15 program, we have been managed through a program management, a contractual relationship with a multitude of vendors, most recently Atlas, which was formerly Moreland Altobelli, and then prior to that, Cardigo Belie. As we're now transitioning out of a lot of our vertical projects moving into the 2021 program, a lot of our vertical projects for which we've been building out will come to its, its lifecycle, or actually completing those projects here at the end of 2020. So with that being said, we thought it would be prudent, understanding that we need to kind of continue to lifecycle our facilities, understanding that we have some capital development in our new 2021 program, but also need to continue to lifecycle of our present facilities, this would probably be the most opportune time to bring to the Board a restructuring of our capital outlay program. So to that end, I'll yield the floor to Benjamin Hopkins, our Building and Maintenance Director, and I'll come back forward with any questions you may have. So Ben.
Thank you, COO. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Board, good evening. Today, I want to speak to you candidly about one of the county's largest capital investments, that being our facilities. Our buildings aren't getting any younger, and much like the incredible staff that worked for Clayton County, through service years to the county, we have to periodically evaluate and amend plans all the way to retirement. That is often referred to as a capital outlay program. So what is that? A capital outlay program, according to the New Mexico Legislative Finance Committee Finance Fact 2008 May Newsletter, is, capital outlay funds in context of government are those funds that are used to build, improve, and equip physical property that is used by the public. That's your buildings, your furniture, your fleet vehicles, everything from a physical standpoint that's gonna support the program. The capital outlay program itself is the planning and guidance on use for those funds to support the county's physical infrastructure that support the programs for the citizens. So everything points back to supporting the citizens of the programs that we do incredibly well through our program departments. So the important words there are planning and guidance. So proper planning. One of the first things that we need to look at, because facilities tend to be in our inventory for 50, 60, sometimes 70 years, we've got to look at where do we want to be, not today, not tomorrow, but in 20 years. Now, I know that oftentimes people are short-sighted and they think about the knee-jerk reaction. I haven't experienced that with this Board, but we've got to be thoughtful about, not necessarily, we need something today, we may need that, but how is that gonna impact tomorrow? If we decide we want to put a library over in Ellenwood, where are we gonna put it? We gotta do the land acquisition, we gotta think about the road, is that gonna support the additional traffic going into that space, so we can then begin to plan out what that looks like, and then when can we provide that to the citizens? We also have to think about our existing facilities. We have over 160 buildings in our inventory today. What is the cost to replace those existing facilities versus the cost to repair? If a roof starts to go bad and it costs $800,000, that's gonna cost less than the building, but then we start talking about the HVAC, we start talking about elevators, we start talking about other components, how long do those components last before they die? So that we can, again, plan out what it looks like and what buildings we need to focus on as we move through the lifecycle of our facilities. We gotta look at it from a cradle-to-grave approach. We've already planned out where we want to go, now we gotta oversight that plan. Cradle-to-grave, concept to completion, to retirement of all the facilities. We have to ensure the design specifications are code compliant and meet the county's need. We have to ensure that those things that are designed properly or installed properly in a workmanlike manner so that they are going to be the best quality facilities for the citizens of Clayton County. Once we've completed those buildings, we're passing it over to Buildings Maintenance anyway, and we're gonna maintain those buildings through the lifecycle, through preventive maintenance, corrective maintenance, the amendments to, the remodels, to make sure that the new departments going into the space, they accommodate those needs. And once that facility has been through its entire lifecycle and it no longer makes sense for the county to hold on to it, we want to be able to give a good, strong recommendation to the Board about how to offload that building. So how are we gonna do that? What's our plan? We want to create a new division within Building Maintenance. We're gonna call it Planning, Design, and Construction. The name says it all. We're going to plan the facilities, we're gonna help design the facilities, we're gonna oversee the construction of the facilities. Once we've gotten it all the way to concept to completion, we pass it over to the existing facilities operations and maintenance division. Everyone knows that very well, and the incredible rate employees of Building Maintenance that maintain all of our buildings, doing the work orders that you all submit, handling the preventive maintenance, doing the in-house facility modifications, and then we're gonna all work together towards a facilities master plan with lots of input from the Board, because we gotta understand your vision of the county, so that we can physically put that in place. Also working with our great, the other directors that work throughout. This is the order chart for the new division. We have an existing Assistant Director who's working with our SPOS program. He will oversee the day-to-day, I'll oversee the division, as I oversee everything with Buildings and Maintenance. We already have existing inspectors on staff. Two inspectors will continue to work within the division, so we're adding a third. We gotta bring in project management, an Admin Secretary to support. Finance is gonna be a dotted-line relationship, as well as contract services that work through central services. We also have SLBE, which is Small Local Business Enterprise, and DBE, disadvantaged business enterprises, that we need to make sure that we are being compliant with county standards for those things. So breaking it down. The Director oversees the whole division. The Assistant Director is gonna oversee the day-to-day management. The Project Managers, we're looking at three. We want to assign a Project Manager for each of the facility projects, as opposed to one person overseeing 15 projects, that's my role. Project Managers are gonna be boots on the ground, day-to-day, to make sure that things are running smoothly, they're hitting the budget, they're doing things the right way so we're getting the building turned over in a timely fashion. We have our inspectors. Again, we already have two that are doing quality control throughout the county, they're gonna evaluate the work as they're visiting, they're doing report and run app, they submit reports, the reports show the deficiencies, we report those back to the contractor, the contractor fixes it, so that whenever the Community Development Inspectors through NOVA come in, so that they can make sure that we have met code, those deficiencies are already there, taken care of, and we're moving more smoothly, we're not having to go back and take down walls and fix things. Administrative Secretary's gonna support the staff. Contract Compliance Officer, again, is working with the SLBE and DBE benchmarks that the Board has set forth. There's a Contract Specialist that we're requesting, potentially. Then there's on-demand contracts, because there are architecture and engineering firms, we'll need some other, some additional input on some of those kinds of things to make sure that we are meeting the code. Staff have over 25 years' experience looking at these things, but we want to make sure that the engineering stamps are there so that we can follow through. We have events that we have, groundbreakings, we have ribbon cuttings, we have those types of things, we have communication that goes out periodically about what the events are happening with the buildings. We're gonna do that from a contract compliance standpoint, through communications. From personnel, total cost, personnel, this is what the salaries look like. Holistically, it looks like it's a savings holistically throughout, and I'll let COO Stanford speak more directly to that. I went very quickly, but we also, because we thought I would skip it, we have to think about how we're gonna be successful. In our current environment, we worry, we worry about benchmarks and we make sure that we are hitting those benchmarks and those promises we give into the citizens. We are doing a design-build process right now, which is very fast. The problem with design-build is it ends up with a lot of change orders. We want to move to a design-bid-build process. It's a little slower, but what it does is it allows us to do a full engagement, engagement with an architect, they design the building with the stakeholder, whomever's gonna be occupying the building, including the Commissioner of the section of where it's gonna be, they'll build, they'll design the whole thing, we can bid that out, we have a hard number of what we're looking at from a cost standpoint, as opposed to someone will bid a building cost and then come back for 75 change orders. We assign Project Managers to each project, which allows time for someone to dive in and understand what the project is, completes the due diligence, and avoids the cost of change orders. We do create the master plan, we've gotta know where we're putting buildings so that we can work in concert with transportation and development, we can ensure from an IT standpoint that we have the support going to where the facilities are, it all works together. We're gonna continue to strengthen our relationships with the stakeholders. The Department has really great relationships currently, we're gonna continue that, we're gonna continue to engage as we're building those buildings, and we need to complete a condition, a facility conditions assessment of our current inventory of buildings to understand how much longer we have on some of our buildings before it's time to start looking to replace them. Any questions?
All right, any of the Commissioners have any questions?
Yes, you spoke about engineering, now will there be engineers and architects on staff, or will they, part-time, or will they all be contracted out?
So when Mr. Hopkins referred to additional on-demand contracts, we'll have individuals in the pipeline to assist us in those areas, 'cause we don't necessarily have the sort of many experts on our staffing, but we certainly have contractual dollars to decide to assist us as we. but we certainly have contractual dollars to decide to assist us as we need it.
Okay, that's something we're already doing, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And as far as, I guess, baselining this out with SPOS projects, where would you see the advantages? Because looking at this, this is going to make our SPOS dollars stretch further. Is that correct?
That is correct. So as of the structure right now, as Mr. Hopkins alluded to, in FY '18, in contractual dollars, we paid for SPOS for personnel along. We spent out $131,781. 2019, we were at $785,615. We had a cost savings because there was a transitional period. But in 2020, we spent out, or we projected to spend out $960,000 for '16. So looking at the $717 dollar amount that we're looking at for bringing it in-house, we have in the upwards of about $200,000 in savings in SPOS money.
Is that difference from last year or this year? Because we have more projects coming out too, though.
That is correct.
Go ahead.
So I'm seeing, we went with the, what was it, the design?
Design bid bill?
Design bid bill. Which means if we go to design bid build, rather than what we're using now, with that, that project management piece is going to be longer then?
The design?
Perhaps.
So correction, it's design bid? Not necessarily. So if we are right now in vertical projects, we're in the way between 12 to 18 projects that we started out with, between the 2009 program and the 2015 program. Based upon our projection now, at least 12, almost 70% of those projects will be onboarded by the end of this fiscal year. The projects that we're more concerned about, we still have the incubator, we still have fire stations, that a lot of those projects were already being managed internal to the organization. And then the largest project in our 2021 program would be the Admin Building that is in the new program. So by us realizing that there's a lot of vertical projects that would be covered off the board anyway, it only made sense to make our focus more on our existing facilities by now providing the strength and the manpower in Building and Maintenance to their staff to manage our onboard and the facilities because we've been having facilities that certainly have outlived their life cycle, whether it's HVAC system or the roofing infrastructure. Now to have a division that will be responsible for reviewing that on a day-to-day basis would give us more of a return on investment.
Great. I'm actually glad to see we're doing something in the area of existing buildings because every day it seems like there's another issue with one of our old, old, old buildings. My question is, SPOS dollars paid for the PM, Atlas. SPOS dollars can also be used for to pay salaries, correct?
That is correct, Chairman. So what we're asking for in this initial blush, the $717 that I think we provided, will be 100% supported by SPOS. Now, do recognize, as they continue to transition into general fund projects, that would have to be a flip. We can't continuously use SPOS money in perpetuity, but at some point in time, we will have to have that to be supported by the general fund. But we're not anticipating that until year three predominantly. Pretty much 100% of SPOS should have been able to cover this division for the first three years.
Okay, 100%?
100%.
Okay.
Okay, hello, everybody. All right, great presentation. Been trying to jump in for a minute. So glad to see that the focus is going to be on maintaining the existing buildings as well as making sure that the proper materials are used. But I am hoping that as a board, we'll have an opportunity to continue to digest the information. Love often, the presentation is really good. One of the things that I noticed in particular is that there is no set formula for the life expectancy of buildings. And so it does go back to what was presented in making sure that the proper, again, the proper materials are used. My concern, however, with onboarding positions is the fact that we're not going to always be in a position where we're going to be building new buildings, especially with an unpredicted financial future of not just our county, but many other counties and across the United States. I would caution our board in seeing the, as we stated earlier, in seeing the short-term benefit versus the long-term possible liability of such. And you know, I'm one that's all about not using consultants, but having people on staff. But again, I caution us in taking a really deep dive and a clear understanding of bringing on positions of over $700,000 in cost to our county for a period of time. And then we're going to have to continue to foot that bill even when we stop building new facilities. And then, as you just alluded to, once SPOS dollars stop paying for those salaries, now we're going to be obligated to the general fund because it's my understanding that once we add on these positions, a lot of times, the board can go and, you know, delete positions, but it's very difficult to do so when you're, and we are talking about deleting a whole division. So the other part I would want to mention is, previously, we did bring in someone to oversee these by way of an assistant to the COO. And we got quite a few issues. I know that I've got quite a few issues with buildings being built and how they're built. And so for me, I need a little bit more information to have the level of confidence that we would be able to meet the needs through our staffing. So I just, I'm looking forward to some further discussions and not us being rushed into a decision.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would just add one other thing with regard to the positions, to be specific. We're looking at, almost 50% of the positions would not be civil service protected positions. They would be time-limited positions. So theoretically, if the project went away, then technically, that position could be abolished. So to your point, theoretically, we could structure it where that if there is no said projects in place and there was no desire to have work continue in that space, technically, that position would go away because it would not be a civil service protected position.
Oh, that's awesome. That's a great point. Thank you for bringing clarity there.
Yes, ma'am.
Everybody, can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I hope this is not a knee-jerk decision that we're making because of previous project managers and others and all. And in that line, thank you all for mentioning that about the positions because I was thinking about when this SPOS ends for a particular project, what happens to those employees. So thanks for making that a little bit clearer to me. But who's going to be doing the maintenance and all the, just the regular general maintenance of these buildings? Because I have quite a few in my district that are in need of replacing different things. I know the rec center, the senior services building, library, you name it. There are times when I have to call Building and Maintenance to get this done. So I want to know, how is this going to affect our employees? And will we have that same line of communication as far as getting things done? Which now we do. You know, the calls are made and staff come up and they make these repairs and all. So how is this expanding this department, making it so big, that we neglect what we already have in place? That's just part of the question. I have something else, too.
So if you'll allow me to address that part of the question first, Commissioner. The Department currently operates as one division. I call it FOM, Facilities Operations and Maintenance. That is the Service Manager and the Master, Senior, and Trade Specialist that come out and do the work in the buildings. Those are the people that change the light bulbs, change the filters on the HVAC. They're the people who are working with to change your flooring and do the painting. Frank Bailey, for example, we just changed a roof, we've worked on the sewer. We've done a number of projects because to your point, the buildings are older and they need support. The Facility Operations and Maintenance Division does not change. We will, in the budget, as I have the last several budgets, continue to ask for additional staff because the benchmark of the number of employees that we need for the square footage that we have through the county and the age of the buildings, we're not there. We do need additional maintenance staff. I will continue to ask for that through the budgets and we'll take bites of the apple as we go so that we can support our facilities. This is a completely separate division. We're working on quality control and we're ensuring that those facilities, as they come online, we're not automatically having to call in warranty work, we're not automatically having to go in and make adjustments, which we've had to do in the past because we haven't had the strong line of communication that the Department has internally, as opposed to a third party coming in with our different departments.
Okay, well, that, well, I still have a few more concerns with that. But now, the other thing is, with all this explaining of what this, I guess, is it called a new department?
No, ma'am, it's a new division of Building and Maintenance.
Okay, a new division and all. I see some overlapping of what we already have in purchasing. You all are naming these different programs, the SLBE and the DBE and all these kind of things. Does that take away from our purchasing department we already have?
So, Jason, go back to the org chart slide. So Commissioner, what you saw, those positions that Ben spoke to are not housed in Building and Maintenance. Those positions will reside in those respective departments. The Finance Department with the accounting position, the Contract Specialist and the Contract Compliance Officer is under Central Services. Do recognize that once Atlas go away December 31st, those positions go away as well. That is a contracted position under, well, the SLBE program to be specific, is handled and managed through Atlas through their contract. So what we're doing is, in essence, just replacing what Atlas will be removing on December 31st.
Okay, again, I just don't want this to be a knee-jerk decision. And I want us to really think it through. And hopefully, you all have done it already. I have not been a part of that. But I just have, I just have some concerns.
Yeah, and let me just say this, Commissioner Hambrecht. This is a proposal. This is something that they are proposing at this time. It's not imminent for a vote or anything like that because they want to make sure that the Commissioners digest the information and make sure that any questions and concerns are addressed properly. But this is basically the first step in bringing it before us so we can make sure that we get our questions answered. And, you know, once Atlas is gone, we have to definitely make a decision as to how we're going to proceed. And this is an option that's being presented to us at this time.
Okay, I have to honestly say, I concur with the Commissioner, though, with Commissioner Hambrecht. I do have, I mean, it's definitely a valiant effort, but I'm a firm believer, if we got to start on what we have in place and working to get that working the way it should, first and foremost. I too, I'm glad for, I mean, I'm glad for the work that has been done in a lot of the buildings, but it has been a lot of labor. It's been a lot of constant communication as a Commissioner to departments, and no offense to you all, but at the end of the day, as policymakers, if we've all, if we are here to set policy and we're constantly having to relay concerns about operations or even how things are being reported or addressed, that's a concern. But for me, because if we're going to onboard additional responsibilities, how can we take on additional responsibilities when we have not mastered what we already have as a responsibility? I think that that's a starting point for me. And I understand, Mr. Chairman, you're saying this is just a presentation, but I'm really looking to see things, a well-oiled wheel, before we add on to that wheel. We do have some issues. And I will tell you, I got issues with Atlas with a leaking building that I didn't find out about until later. I got issues with design. But at the end of the day, I think that we have to take a step back. I concur with the Commissioner, let's not make knee-jerk reactions, but let's figure out how to operate within what we have before we add on to something else. That's just where, that's just my thoughts.
Mr. Chair, can I say something, please?
Commissioner Gregory, yes, ma'am.
I, to me, I thought it was a very forward-thinking idea. I really did. Because we, you know, since I've been on this board and, you know, I've been a few longer than anybody, we haven't taken an approach like this, you know, because one of the things we have to do, we're supposed to be doing, as well as the policymaking for now, is planning for the future. And I thought this was a very forward-thinking idea. I thought it was very great. I remember when we interviewed Mr. Hopkins and his utilizing the talent and the skillset that he brings to Clayton County. Because I remember when we interviewed him, the things and his background and so forth. I just, you know, we, and I'm not, we've used SPOS program managers over and over and over. You know, I remember when the CH2M healed. And it's kind of like, you know, we spent a lot of money and nobody's going to take care of our house like we are, excuse me, like we are. You know, it's kind of like, we rented out our old house. You know, the renters don't take care of it. So as far as our county, our people working for us, nobody's going to take care of our stuff like us. And I think we've seen that in the past and even with, you know, what we're seeing now with some of the buildings, you know, leaking or so forth. And I just want to add my two cents in. That's just kind of how I feel. I really am very impressed and thought it was very progressive and forward-thinking.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Gregory. And also, you know, as a county, we've always been reactionary when it comes to our buildings upkeeping maintenance. I think, again, as you said, Commissioner Gregory, it's forward-thinking. Whether it's the best fit, I don't know, but that's why we're doing a presentation for us to take a look at it and get some questions answered and to possibly, you know, as a result, come up with some other options. But we have to do something, so that's.
You're exactly right, but I just got to add this. When it takes four, over four years, to get the corrections done at the Jim Huey Rec Center, I think that this is great forward-thinking, but there are a lot of things conceptually that will work. But until we know that the folks are able to handle what's in place, I just have concern about adding on additional responsibilities immediately. So I think that sometimes we think additional, adding on, adding on, adding on is the answer. But sometimes, it may be that we need to go back and take a look at what we have and figure out how to make that work within the needs so that we can take care of our own. So that we can stand by that. So that's just my final word on that.
Well, and looking at this, too, I do see a lot of where you all have looked at the business processes for re-improvement. That's what I do see in the presentation you just gave, which means you've gone back, you've gone back to look at what was failing or what was not working as we needed and began to change it. I noticed that when you have your dotted lines going over there saying that's your Central Services portion, which is maintaining that. You know, I don't, I guess what we have to do, and you all, it looks like you've done it, is you've gone back and looked at projects and looked at where they've fallen, where they failed, or where they've slowed, and said, how do we begin to slow that down or impede on that action taking place again? So, you know, I don't know the total business processes, you know it better than I do, but I think it's a great, great start.
Well, so to your point, Commissioner, I just will add one additional point. Commissioner Warner brings up a good point. The Jim Huey Recreation Center is a perfect example. Jim Huey is a byproduct of a facility from a design standpoint that wasn't done initially the correct way. And now we're paying for the infrastructure and upkeep of that facility 14 years after it was built. So because there was no continuity from the space and time when the contractor was in place to handing that baton off to the internal staff. So part of the issue was, from a capital outlay perspective, what we haven't set money aside for, SPOS money traditionally is set aside for new construction. When you have the life cycle of certain facilities that have now expired, you don't have the funding to take care of those issues, even though you identified the issue almost three or four years ago. So what we're doing now is trying to figure out, how do we align the capital outlay dollars with the build-out of facilities so therefore, there's continuity in the plan as a whole is ultimately the goal.
Correct. And then with the maintenance piece, would figure out, since we're in that position, how do we begin to rectify it?
That is correct.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Board.
Thank you. Next up, Solicitor General's Compensation Review will be presented by Ms. Lo, I believe.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair.
I'm going to speak up a little bit. You don't have to.
I'll make him a little bit.
You don't have, yes, take it off, that'd be fine.
That'd be better. All right. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. I am, again, Carol Lowe, presenting on behalf of HR Director Pamela Ambles. On behalf of the Solicitor General, Human Resources is requesting a compensation review and consideration of an increase in compensation for the Solicitor General. There are two factors that guide the Solicitor General's compensation. The first one is Senate Bill 677. It created the State Court for Clayton County. It provides salaries for State Court Judges and the Solicitor General. It sets the annual It sets the annual compensation for the Solicitor General at $94,444. It sets longevity pay at one and one-half times base salary multiplied by length of service. The current Solicitor appointed, was appointed October 24th of 2019. The second factor is County Resolution 2014-02. It was adopted August 19th, 2014. It provides supplements for specific positions. It provides a supplement for the Solicitor General of $13,333. And the Solicitor General, the county benefits is insurance only. The solicitor's request, the solicitor's requesting 28.5% increase of his base salary. His current salary is $94,444. The proposed increase base salary will be $121,361, which is a cost of $26,917. To accomplish the request of the Solicitor General, it requires the Board to approve an increase in the supplement. The proposed salary at 28,000, I'm sorry, proposed salary at 28.5% is $121,361. The supplement will have to increase by $26,917, which will put his total supplement at $40,250. The legislative action, a legislative action is required to increase the base salary. Base salary can be increased by resolution through a supplement. There are consequences if the legislative action eventually surpasses the resolution. And please be mindful that future legislative action can be engaged by the state to increase the salary. We would also like to note that the parity in regards to the requests, the Chief Judge County supplement is $50,000. The District Attorney supplement is $39,140. The highlights and justification of the request by the Solicitor. In 2020, they have collected $2.1 million in fines. He is responsible for five divisions. The department was reorganized, has been reorganized since his tenure, and the COVID-19 climate has also increased duties. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions from Board members?
Yes, I have one. And maybe I missed it in the presentation, but who is responsible for paying or where does the supplemental pay come from?
Ms. Lo, and before she answers that, Solicitor General Charles Brooks is online. If you have any questions, you would like to direct his way. Ms. Lo, can you answer that question?
The county, we've paid the supplement.
The, if the base salary is increased, then it will be done by the legislators. And that's the only way the base salary can be increased. So what, basically what is asked is, it's not for us to increase the base salary, but just a supplement.
Correct.
And the slide, you'll have to go back to it. For the Chief Judge was, we pay her, what, 50?
50,000, yes. The District Attorney, 39,140.
And what was the request again for the Solicitor?
Well, it will increase by $26,917 for a total of $40,250. We currently paid 13,333.
Questions?
That number before that you stated was per each position was supplemental?
Yes, yes.
How many other elected officials do we pay supplements to? We pay supplements, they're all elected, well, not all, all the judges?
All the judges, let me see if I have.
And what's the breakdown of what the supplement is that we pay them? And could that be a domino effect for them to make similar requests, which would have a higher impact?
Right, and I don't have that information in front of me as far as what the other elected officials are receiving in a supplement.
I would like to see a list of that when y'all can put it together, email it and share it with the rest of the Board as well.
Will do.
Any other questions?
I have one, not particularly related to the Solicitor, but as we look at, at the end of December, we're going to have, you know, new judges and so forth. Is there a way that we can, this will probably be faced with this issue again as Ms. Doja said in her report, you know, the number of people, you know, voters is increasing, which means more people, you know, come to the county and all that stuff. And I'm sure their caseloads are increasing and rightfully so. You know, they probably do, do some increase or whatever. But I just happen to think about that, is there another, any other way that we can kind of handle this? Because we'll probably be dealing with it again at the beginning of the year, just asking.
All right. Mr. Brooks, would you like to make a statement?
I, I would actually. So to kind of give framework to, and first, let me say thank you to the Board, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioner Gregory Hamburg and Franklin Warner. Thank you for entertaining the conversation. But to really give a framework to my statutory duties as a Solicitor. So the duties of Solicitors is outlaid in OCGA 151866. And one of the, it's about four primary statutory duties. The first is to attend all State Court hearings where criminal cases to be heard. The second is to administer the oath as required by law to the bailiffs and other officers of the court and to assist the presiding judge that will equate to the Chief Judge of a State Court in organizing the court as may be necessary. That's particularly relevant now with the COVID pandemic because we had to, we've had to reorganize court in a virtual platform. We've had to set up court in a way that it can host a number of different hearings that we traditionally would do in a in-person setting. And that's particularly relevant as it relates to our current posture in the world. Additionally, the third statutory requirement is to file accusations on criminal cases that are, that I deem are prosecutable cases. Numbers-wise, our office prosecutes roughly about 50,000 cases a year. Half of that are traffic cases. So we do anywhere between, actually more than half, 10 to 11,000 cases that are what you would call your, your standard misdemeanor cases, the remainder are traffic cases. If you factor in all the cases that we prosecute, the 50,000 some, some odd cases, we produce revenue-wise in fines and fees somewhere in the area about 2.1, 2.2 million dollars. Our general budget allocation annually is about 2.8 million. So we almost are, almost are a self-sufficient department as far as like revenue generation. And that's not the focus of our office, but just gives context to the amount of cases that we move through the office. Additionally, the fourth statutory requirement is to attend all appellate hearings that, that the state have to be represented in. So when the statute was enacted SB 677 in 2006, there were four divisions of State Court. And when I say divisions, I'm talking about there were four judges. A division represents a courtroom. And after, I think it was in 2008, there was a fifth division that was added and that was Judge Mason, who is now Superior Court Judge, was appointed to that particular division. At that point, additional staff came on, additional responsibilities came on as it relates to managing and carrying out our statutory duties related to that courtroom. So the responsibilities increased because of the number of courtrooms increased. Unlike the State Court judges, each division of court is only responsible for their assigned cases. So there's five courtrooms in State Court and each judge has an allocation of criminal cases that they handle. And they also handle civil cases that I have no real parts in. But to just give context, there's one Solicitor General that's responsible for managing and staffing all five courtrooms. And so that's why the request is to be put in parity with, with the Chief Judge of State Court because my responsibilities requires me to be responsible for all five courtrooms. That's the.
You froze up on us, Mr. Brooks.
I, I think Chairman asked for the, the comparison of supplemental salary by other elected official. I, I, I have looked at that and I think you'll find that the, my position, the Solicitor General's position is the lowest and among, among the lowest of supplemental income. But far as responsibilities, the responsibilities are equal if not more.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Brooks? All right, we will take that under consideration. Thank you, sir, and thank you, Ms. Lo, for your presentation of the.
Can I ask one question to Ms. Lo? Does the supplemental reset when it, when a new judge or official, elected official comes in? Because it looked like it grows over time?
Right, one and a half times the base salary multiplied by length of service.
Okay, longevity pay. So a new person wouldn't get that.
Great, okay.
And, and if I, if I may?
Yes, sir.
The legislation, it, it, it caused that one and a half percent increase or longevity increase. But it's, it's foreseeable that the framers of that legislation envisioned the one and a half percent to be more akin to a cost of living increase. And so as long as you're in that position, holding that position, in January it resets its one and a half percent increase, basically a cost of living increase. But it never factored, the original legislation never factored in the cost of inflation. And so when you do the cost of inflation, at least the base salary from 2006, $94,444, $2,006 in 2020, that it will put it at that $121,000 mark if you factor in the current inflation. And I think that's right at, and actually those numbers, that's from August, that number is 28 and a half percent.
Mr. Brooks, is your pay tied in to any other salaries, Superior Court judges or State Court judges salaries? No?
No, sir. There is legislation through, through the state where other solicitors basically are like 80%, 90% of State Court Chief Judge. But the way the legislation is written in Clayton with SB 677 is independent of any other position.
Any other questions, Ms. Lo or Mr. Brooks? Again, thank you. Appreciate you being on the call to make, to give us a little clarity, Mr. Brooks, I appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys giving, giving me the opportunity to present this information.
Okay, are there any?
I have one, I have one quick question and I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Solicitor General, as well as the HR Department. But when I looked at the base salary as well as the supplement and it's bringing, and I got to ask, so then your supplement will be 40,000 where the DA is still 39, can we go back to that slide? My memory is not that good, I'm sorry, I'm trying, but can we go back to that? Okay, so we're looking at the 50,000 and then the DA supplement is 39,000. So have we calculated the percentage of the increase in relation to both the judge, Chief Judge and the DA and the supplement that's being requested by you Solicitor General Brooks? Because we see that there is a difference, but have we calculated the percentage of difference between those three supplements?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, we have not.
I would like to see that, if I may. And then the other quick question is, go back to the base salary. Do you have the base salaries of the Chief Judge and the DA to be able to add to it? Or, and maybe I'm asking the wrong question, is the DN salary totally funded by the state? No, the supplement is there. The supplement is provided by the county, correct, even for the DA?
Correct.
Okay, so then in terms of the base salary, have we looked at the percentage of the supplement versus the base salary?
Now, the base salary is set by legislation. We pay it, but they set the salary. Is the DA also, is the DA tied still to the Chief Judge?
I'm, I'm not sure.
I believe, I believe that position is, Chairman. And the DA is a state paid.
Okay, my, my question, Mr. Chairman, is not whether, I did ask the question about who's paying initially. But my question is for me to have a better understanding of the difference in percentages because we only have one percentage that has been provided. But I want to be able to see the difference in percentage of the base salary versus the supplement and then the difference in percentage of the supplements between the three positions that have been proposed to us. And that's just for me to be able to better analyze the request.
You're clear what the request is, Ms. Lo?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, please provide that to all of us, please. Any other questions, Commissioner Franklin Warner?
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Brooks, Solicitor General.
I was just going to say, the, for that number that's on the slide, I believe it said Chief Judge County. So I believe that there, there are two Chief Judges. I'm not sure which one that represents, if it's State Court or Superior Court. But I'm not sure if their supplement is the same, in fact, it may be different.
Well, the breakdown that she'll provide us will definitely delineate between the State Court Superior Court Judge, Chief Judge.
So just, and I also want to see the percentage of the, the change. So once we made the change years ago, how did we, what was the formula that we, that was used to implement the change in the supplement? So that's why I'm asking for the percentages so that I can compare it. Because if we see that when they implemented the change in the supplement years ago and there, and there is a disparity in the percentages, then that also help us be able to move forward. And it answers some of the questions that some of the other Commissioners had as well. So it won't matter about what level of base pay somebody comes in on. It's about the fact that the percentage of increase is going to be consistent that we can stand by as a Board, as opposed to, as opposed to arbitrarily making some changes, if that makes sense.
Can I say that if this was done, I believe you said 2006, then the exercise of utility based off what Solicitor Brooks had stated about the, the divisions growing might be that we might need to go back and look at, do an exercise to review the supplemental calculation across the board. And that way we do not get additional requests based off of this.
Well, and we got to remember this too, Commissioners. By bringing the percentages about, it allows for us to have an, to have an argument to go back to the state and say, as Solicitor said, you've added another courtroom to us. So now we've got more of a workload. So now we need you all as a state to make sure that you're funding that appropriately. I just think the request is definitely something that is, is valid. But at the end of the day, I just want to do a little bit more research so I can personally have a better understanding. And we can too. Does that make sense, everybody? Does that make sense, Mr. Solicitor General? Because there's a burden added to you. But we want to make sure everybody shares in that cost of that burden, it's not just to the cost of the citizens of Clayton County.
Completely understand.
Mr. Reed, you, I'm sorry, did I cut you off, Mr. Brooks, where you finish? Mr. Brooks, where you finished?
Solicitor Brooks, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I was asking if you were finished, I thought you were about to say something.
I did want to just add that to alleviate having to revisit future requests for supplemental increase. They, and I think Mr. Reed can speak to this as well. There can be a legislative request done to the, to the county delegation to amend SB 677. request done to the, to the county delegation to amend SB 677 to increase the base pay, and by increasing the base pay, you can eliminate the supplement altogether. But that's just an option, and actually, you can add, there's another option to, if you increase the base pay by the state legislation, or put it, and put additional language that are put to increase in parity with State Court, Chief Judge of State Court by 80%, 90%, then there, you wouldn't have to revisit any type of supplemental income. But that's a, that may be a different conversation for a different time.
Mr. Brooks, this is Hambrick. Do you know who would make that request through the legislators? Would that be a request from you, or would that be a request from the Board?
I can make the request, but it would have to go, before making the request, it would have to be a resolution of the Board.
Yeah, the delegation would want to know that we support his request, because at the end of the day, we're the ones who would have to fund it.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed?
And I did want to just make it clear, because I think there was some, a little ambiguity about what pots we're talking about. So, what they, some of the numbers that are there that were presented to you, there's local acts and local legislation that provides that people are getting paid certain things. This Board passed a resolution that added additional pay as well, and I emailed that to everybody, to the Board a few minutes ago, so that you can see some of those numbers, there's maybe a couple thousand here, 10,000 here. So, you can see, you all decided on your own that whether it was a local act that did it, whether there was a state law that did it, you all decided, you, meaning the Board of Commissioners at that time, decided to pay a little extra to a number of different, not only elected officials, but certain county employee, or county appointed persons, like UGA extension. So, that is there, that may address some of the issues, Commissioner Warner, that you addressed, as far as the, wanted to see the percentage, because while that particular resolution doesn't address every single pay, it doesn't address, like, the Superior Court doesn't even address the State Court, but it does show what you, what the Board at that time broke down as far as who was being paid how much and from what pot. So, I sent that to you by, I sent that to you by email just a few minutes ago.
All right, thank you.
I have it here, and thank you, Mr. Reed, for your information.
We'll definitely take a look at it, thank you.
One other thing, that as we were just sitting here, it looks like the United States Supreme Court lifted the stay on the census count. So, now it looks like, we don't have until October 31st to the census, it's actually stopped as of right now, well, any day, because the Trump administration is looking to try to stop it now. So, the things that we were saying, you have till the 31st, absent some other change from the courts, it looks like it may have come to an end, or maybe coming to an end very, very soon.
Well, we have to get official word on end date, correct?
Well, yes, I'm sure the Trump administration is gonna send something out.
Or would they go back and say, backdate it to October 5th?
I'm sure we'll hear something in the next day or two, but we, I just saw on the, that the Supreme Court lifted the stay, so we'll get some guidance soon, but the October 31st date is more than likely out.
So, with that being said, be counted. Go to the census and be counted. Do it today. Don't wait around for the 31st, don't wait for the judge or the president to come back and give us a deadline date. Let's do it today, before any dates can come out. It's very important, very important for Clayton County to get our just due when it comes to the federal funds that come down and benefit us as a county and a community. So, please, tell everybody. Go to www.sensus, Census...
2020 census.gov.
2020 census.gov, thank you, Commish.
You can just actually put 2020 census.gov, and the phone number, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, is 844-330-2020. That's 844-330-2020, if you don't mind.
Yes, please, make sure you either call or go to your, to your iPhone, iPass, or whatever, and be counted. You got something to steal?
Yes. Real quick, Board, we task, or the Board tasked Mr. GK Committee Development to have a markup of the notice of hearings. We have a sign in my office, at some point in time, we'll try to carve out some time with each of the Board members to get your feedback on the rendering that Mr. GK has, so that they can move forward on completing the sign. So, I just want to let you know, we have that in our office, and we'll reach out to you all individually on your feedback.
All right, any other announcements, comments?
Mr. Chair, can I just thank the staff and everybody real quick? I know that a lot of people realize that these work sessions bring about an additional workload, but as you so alluded to, as well as the rest of the Board of Commissioners, I believe that these work sessions are gonna continue to help us as we move forward in a proactive standpoint as a Board of Commissioners, because again, I just urge all of us, especially those that are charged with keeping us in as a sound financial institution or a governing institution, let's bear in mind, not only to keep, to complete the census and be counted, but the fact that our future is depending upon our level of involvement and our proactiveness, even as leaders. We are in definitely uncertain times, and I just wanted to thank the entire staff for doing so, and for really embracing these work sessions. I think it's gonna help us.
All right, any other comments? If not, we stand adjourned. Have a good evening.